Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Maryville Town Council meeting for today, Tuesday, November 26th at 6:30 PM. Please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for our interlocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Well, God, our Father, what a privilege to come before you this evening. A time of gratitude is in our hearts, and so, Father, we want to pause and say thank you for blessing us with so much, so much, Father. Thank you. Father, tonight, again, we've come before you seeking wisdom and knowledge and guidance, thanking you for the men and women who have assumed mantles of responsibility and leadership in this community, for your blessings for wisdom and knowledge and guidance, and thanking you for protecting us and providing those who do protect us. Thank you, and all this we pray. Amen.
Here's your main standing for a moment of silence. Mr. January, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Vice President Neal.
Here.
Councilwoman Haines Edwards.
Present.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Present.
Councilwoman Uselak.
Here.
Councilwoman Pettit. Councilwoman Hardaway. President Bella.
Here.
Five present, two absent.
Thank you. Moving on tonight to petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations, I'll call on our town manager, Michael Griffin, for a presentation.
Please come by. If you, you're more acquainted with this than I am since I've been here. My billet with the town of Maryville is 14 months, and one of the things that continues to impress me is that we have a policy of recognizing at the second meeting of each month an employee of the month. I think it's a wise move. Today, we're going to recognize someone, and I hope the fire chief or his designee will join me. We're going to recognize somebody who considers themselves a member of the Knights of Malta. Now, some of you might know who they are, but I'm going to show you something. In fact, I'm going to use your shirt, if I may.
Sure.
You'll take a look at this cross. That is a Maltese cross, and early in the development of firefighting as a profession, it's dangerous, it requires courage, and it also requires compassion. Fire Service adopted the Cross of Malta because they wanted to evoke and align themselves with the imagery and symbolism of the Knights of Malta, known for their bravery, their integrity, and their willingness to do anything, to stand up, in their case, for the kingdom, in the case of the firefighters, to get you safe. That's a cool thing, everybody, that they'll run in, do anything, and get you out. That's the best part of them, isn't it? I love that part about them. So, one of them that we're going to honor this evening is named Dave Perry. Chief, I'm going to ask you, if you would please, to read the certificate that recognizes him as our employee.
Sure. Dave has been with the Maryville Fire Department both as a volunteer and in a career position. While Dave was a volunteer, he served many years in the U.S. Army. When he retired from the Army, he became a career firefighter for the town of Maryville. Dave served his country and continues to serve his community. And I'm going to expound a little bit on that. Dave was born and raised in Maryville. In 2001, Dave did become a volunteer here in the town. In 2002, Dave joined the Army. While he was in the Army, he was stationed in Hawaii and in New York. He was deployed a total of four times, twice to Afghanistan for Operation Enduring Freedom and twice to Iraq for Operation Iraqi Freedom. When Dave was finished serving his country in 2011, late 2011, right? December, he came back to Maryville, bought a house, started a family, and became one of the original 14 career members of the town of Maryville Fire Department, or, I'm sorry, the Maryville Fire Protection Territory that serves the town of Maryville and Ross Township. So, you might notice that Dave's got a little injury here. He did get injured in the light of duty at a house fire we had a couple of months ago. He is recovering, and we hope to have him back soon. Dave's dedication, this is a small token, I think, for Dave's dedication, is not only serving his community, but taking that sense of community to a sense of country, and I think Dave deserves at least a round of applause. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Moving on this evening to public hearings. Mr. Svetnov for ordinance 24-43 on second reading.
Yes, we received the proof of publication. Everything seems to be in order at this time. We suggest that the public hearing proceed as necessary.
Very good. This is ordinance 24-43 on second reading. It's an ordinance of the Town Council of the town of Maryville, Indiana, appropriating proceeds of the Maryville Fire Protection Territory Bonds, Series 2024. We're now open for public comment on this particular ordinance. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll turn back to the council for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of Mrs. Uselak, with a second by Councilor Neal for approval of ordinance 24-43 on second reading. Questions or comments from the council? Anything to add, Mr. Griffin?
No, Mr. President, but it is a necessary last step. The proceeds were, I beg the council's pardon, I should have stood.
That's all right.
Mr. President, Madam Vice President, members of the council, Mr. January, Mr. Svetnov, they did settle on this. The proceeds have actually been deposited and are accounted for, but the law is very clear in Indiana, till we have an appropriation, they can't spend any of it, and they did borrow it for real needs. So, our hope is that you will pass and adopt this this evening, please.
Very good. Any other questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, Mr. January, could you call the roll, please?
Sure, Mr. President. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haines Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uselak.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Five in favor.
Five-zero, motion carries. Moving on to the second item on first reading, ordinance 24-44, public hearing, Mr. Svetnov, please.
Yes, again, the proofs of publication have been reviewed, they appear to be in order, and at this time, the public hearing is necessary to proceed.
This is an appropriation and actment, ordinance 24-44. It's actually moving funds around in various accounts into other accounts for spending purposes. The amount is $109,500. That is the transfer amount. The increase is $109,500. The net effect to the budget is zero. Open for public comment on this ordinance, 24-44. Is there any public comment? Hearing none, back to the council. I'll entertain a motion for approval on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Uselak, with a second by Mrs. Neal for approval of ordinance 24-44. Questions or comments from the council? Mr. Griffin, anything to add?
Mr. President, members of the council, if you please, I've made a request I hope that you will honor. This particular ordinance for an additional appropriation did not get to you in the form we needed to get it to you, so it never had its first reading at the prior meeting. We did take steps to allow for the public hearing, which is a requirement in statute for us. This actually is so we can close out some matters for the month of November, which will end over the weekend. So, our hope is, Mr. President, that I can appeal to the council, that they will take the step of considering this on the same night of introduction after passing on first reading as it has. If you would consider it tonight also on second reading, and perhaps from that consideration adopted, favorite for adoption. We do need the money to be moved in those locations. The money's been identified for obligations that we've identified. As we get close to the end of the year, and the end of the month, and each of the last months of the year, this becomes part of the housekeeping that is typical, and so we're hopeful that we can invite your goodwill to take this step.
Thank you. Anything else from the council? Mr. January, roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haines Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uselak.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Five in favor.
Five-zero, motion carries. Mr. Svetnov, with five members present, can we suspend the rules to read this on second reading?
Yes, we can, as long as we have a unanimous vote.
That's right.
Regarding the suspension of the rules.
Very good. Chair, entertain a motion to suspend the rules tonight to read ordinance 24-44 on second and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilor She.
Second.
Second by Councilor Neal to approve this on second and final reading tonight. I'm sorry, to suspend the rules. I'm sorry. Any questions or comments on suspension of the rules? Hearing none, Mr. January, roll call, please.
Vice President Neal.
Excuse me? Yes.
Vice Councilwoman Haines Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uselak.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Five in favor.
Motion carries to suspend the rules tonight to read this ordinance on second reading. This is because of a timing issue. Chair, entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Uselak, seconded by Councilor Neal.
Uh-uh.
Seconded by who?
Take one.
Councilor She.
You guys.
To approve this on second and final reading. Any further discussion on this? We don't need to do a public hearing, we just did that, right?
That's correct. We just did that.
Mr. January, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haines Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uselak.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Five in favor.
Five in favor, the motion carries. Thank you all.
I thank the council.
Moving on tonight to deconsent agenda, we have the accounts payable register voucher approval for November 26th, the AP register summary for ARP purchases for the same date, the approval of the town council meeting minutes of November 12th, and the approval of the special town council meeting minutes for November 20th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Uselak, with a second by Mrs. Neal for approval of the consent agenda. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and motion carries. Moving on tonight to standing committee reports, Budget and Finance. Vice President Neal.
Thank you, President Bella. I like it this time, Mr. Griffin could speak on our Budget and Finance.
Mr. Griffin.
Madam Vice President, thank you. Mr. President, thank you. We recently just convened a meeting of the Budget and Finance Committee. Our finance advisor from Sender, Trista Hussin, briefed us on the condition of our budget. As the council is aware, when our appeal, our excessive levy appeal, which we expected fully not to get, and our expectations were met, we had been doing a parallel budget. We went over that this evening. There's a few refinements that we need to make that are related to getting a final number for our health insurance, which went up roughly nine and a half to, it's just under 10%. And then we'll be able to have one more meeting to report that to you, and then the final step will be to receive our, what most people call a 1782 notice. It's named for the House bill that created the law for it. It's basically a pre-notice or a pre-budget order, so we get one last crack to make sure their math is good and our math is good, and then our hope is that we'll have a final budget order by the end of December. But there's just a few refinements that we need to make. It's roughly about $323,000 new operating dollars under the 4% growth quotient. There's not a lot of undue changes to consider, basically on the strength of the excessive levy appeal being denied, unless there's a special question of me, Mr. President, members of the council, and Madam Vice President, I'll be pleased to be seated.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. That's all.
Anything else, Ms. Neal?
No, that's all.
Council Affairs, Mr. Pettit, I believe, was not feeling well tonight and did go home. Street Department, Mrs. Uselak.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. I have to report, they are still, Mr. King, the director, he is still leaf, picking up the leaves, they're vacuuming them. He's got up the holiday decorations. I had calls from Chapel Hill regarding a driveway that will be flooding, and it did last year. Mr. King, our director, went right out there, and he did what he could at this present time. And let's see, what else do I have? Oh, they came out on the weekend, and they were street sweeping, the public works, and that was on a Saturday, which totally surprised everybody, but they did do a good job. And so, do you have, oh, we have two open positions, two. Labor One with the Street Department. If anybody is interested, please get ahold of our town manager, or try to let somebody else know here, like Mr. King. Do you have anything else to report, Steve?
I will later on in the, in the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. King. Thank you, Mrs. Uselak. Mr. King, would you tell the audience what those jobs pay and what kind of benefits they have? Maybe collectively, we can all, we might know somebody looking for a job.
So, we have, so we have two Labor One positions currently in our department. They start off at $22.73 an hour. CDL license is not required, but is preferred. We do in-house CDL training at our facility, so if you don't have one, we can, we can train you for one. We do everything from leafacking to snow plowing to removing deceased animals from the roadways, to pothole patching, planting in the planters, so, you know, we do a variety of things. So, if you need an application, we have applications available at our office at 13 West 73rd Avenue. It's also available online, the application is, and I believe the job description's on there, too.
Oh, and Steve, I also was questioned if women can, if women can apply for that.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, very.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Sure.
We have females now in the department.
Come on.
Do we, in the department? Oh, okay.
We do.
Good.
Our foreman is a female.
Who is that, Steve?
Tracy Ryan.
Oh, Tracy, okay, thank you.
Anything else, Mrs. Uselak?
No, that's it for now, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Elections, public relations, and town beautifications. Vice President Neal.
Thank you, President Bella. We did meet last Monday. We finalized all of the gateway signs and also signs for our parks. We are waiting for quotes to come back, and if we get those quotes, our next meeting will be December the 2nd, and that's all.
Thank you. Personnel policy, employee benefits, anything to add, Mr. Griffin, in Ms. Hardaway's absence?
No, Mr. President. However, you do have an ordinance that came out of Council Affairs you'll consider for second reading that's a slight amendment to the wage and salary ordinance that also had been discussed at the Personnel Committee some time ago. At the appropriate time, I'll be happy to talk about the ordinance then. That would be all we'd be reporting at this time.
Thank you. We'll hear about public safety under your report, okay, Chief? Town Special Projects, Mrs. Neal.
Oh, thank you, President Bella. Special Projects, we have our holiday home decorating contest that is going on. You should be able to find the information online. You can register for the home decorating contest by December the 6th, and then the online voting will take place from the 9th through the 20th. This was an excellent project last year, so hopefully we'll get some great turnout for that. Our Street Department did get our tree and all of our Christmas decoration up for our annual Christmas tree lighting, which will be held on December 6th at the Dean and Barber Community Center from 6, I'm sorry, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM. We are doing something a little different with that. It's still not too late to jump on. It's called Sponsor a Christmas Tree. This is for local businesses, if they want to sponsor a Christmas tree, and they actually get to come out and decorate their Christmas tree. So, if anyone remember from last year, we had all the Christmas trees decorated from the schools. We'll have that contest going on also. As of our last event meeting, we had already had five of our trees already sponsored, so if you would like to get in on that, just contact Lynn DeRosa down here, or either Barb at the Barber and Dean Center. So, it's not too late to still get on it. The sponsorships are fairly reasonable, $300 and $200 for, for the tree, and we're supplying the tree and the lights, and the organization supplies the decorations. Is that for both of them? Oh, so with the $300 sponsor, we're, we're doing something a little different. They actually, if you guys aren't familiar, in the center, on the brick wall, they'll get their logo printed on the brick as part of the $300 sponsorship.
Oh, okay.
So, that, that's, we thought that was really unique and different to try this year. And that is all for that.
Thank you. Moving on to Department and Commission reports, Lake County Solid Waste Management District, Mrs. Neal.
Thank you again, President Bella. The Lake County Solid Waste, the next meeting is held on December the 19th at 6:30. Our last meeting, which was last week, was canceled due to lack of participation from all of the surrounding cities and towns. They're requesting that we have an alternate, which I have already asked one of the councils to be an alternate, just in case, so they don't continue to run into this problem. So, the December 19th meeting is a make-up meeting that they're having because of the meeting that was missed for the month of November. And then they're also still accepting applications for Citizens Advisory Committee. They're looking for five people to put on that committee. You can go to the, their website and find that information, and they're also hiring for an environmental, educational, and outreach coordinator, and that application is also located on their, on their website.
Very good.
And that's all.
Thank you. Mrs. Neal, anything to add about the Fire Territory Board?
Uh, no, there's nothing for that, thank you.
Moving on to Department Head reports, Lisa Roberts, Parks Department.
No report, Mr. President, thank you.
Okay. Police Department, Chief Nusis.
Thank you, Mr. President. As expected during this time of year, our thefts have spiked. It always happens every single year, so that's something that we're keeping an eye on. I wanted to give a shout out of, as I've been staying kind of active on our social media page, it's kind of hard to do everything on it, but within this last week, it's been a very busy week for our officers. The bad weather, unexpected, our first snowfall, you would have thought that it was like everybody's first day of driving again, and it became very difficult. We had a lot of accidents, we had a lot of people sliding off the roadway, so they went out there and they handled it like champs. In addition to that, they're answering all their other calls that come in from, anything from robberies to thefts to everything you name it. We had a robbery that our officers were able to quickly find the car, track it down, and we were able to go and apprehend the suspect. We had a stabbing yesterday that we were able to quickly apprehend the suspect that one as well. That one was a little more deceptive, and it wasn't very simple to do. It was kind of a domestic matter, but we were able to get it all figured out. So, one of the things I want to do is I want to thank our neighboring agencies. They've been providing a lot of assistance with us because we've been so tied up this last week, so I don't have a list of everybody, but anybody that it might be, anywhere from Crown Point to County, whoever it was, I want to say thank you. As holidays continue to come, we are going to anticipate on shifting certain operations and how we do things. We want to focus on our businesses to try and slow down some of these thefts, hopefully discourage people from doing anything that they shouldn't do, and we'll start, we've kind of been toying around with different ideas, but we plan on putting that into play here soon. And the last thing, I got a phone call from Mr. Steve King yesterday, and I was pretty hot with what he had to tell me. I'm going to be nice, and I'm going to say a nitwitted simpleton took it upon themselves to take a stop sign and move it on 91st Avenue by the bike trail, correct?
Yeah, 90, so, yeah, 91st Avenue and Noble Street going into Marion Woods subdivision. Last Wednesday night, the stop signs were removed on 91st Avenue and placed back at the bike trail, which is just to the east of that. I spoke with Costa about this. This isn't a joke, okay? This, this could have been fatal for somebody. The people pulling out of that subdivision, you know, are expecting the traffic to stop, and because somebody wants to play a prank, okay, they could have lost their lives. Okay, this is, this, this is not acceptable, and, and if you know who's doing it, you need to turn them in, because this, this could have cost somebody their lives, and it's, we, we, we just, we just cannot have that.
As you said, you took the words out of my mouth, it compromises the safety of people, and if we do find out who it is, I promise you, I will hammer you with any type of legal action that we can.
Were there any neighbors with ring camber, with ring cameras that might have picked it up?
No.
No, the, the resident that called in on early Thursday morning said that the signs were there Wednesday because he was out doing yard work, and he just, you know, recognized them stopping, and Thursday morning, he came out and was out in the yard and noticed it unusual that the cars weren't stopping, and then he looked, and the stop signs were missing.
Oh.
So, we got them, we got them right back up, so, you know, everything's been restored out there, but it's just, it's just, it's heartbreaking to think that, that somebody would do that as, as a joke, not fully understanding the consequences of what could have happened.
Steve, in a case like that, because they, they could, you know, really do it again, would you like cement it into the, into the ground, or?
Well, what they, what they did, they didn't take the post, they took the signs down off the post, and then they took them down, you know, to the east where the bike trail crosses, and put them up on the post down there. So, it wasn't that they pulled the whole thing out, they just took the signs down.
Pretty diabolical.
Yeah, it's, it's crazy.
So, I want to say thank you to the neighbor that found it, thank you, Chief, for, you know, quickly correcting it so we didn't have to have any type of bad interactions there. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Griffin, have you received any complaints from bikers about that crossover? I know we have ample signs there and a blinking yellow light, right?
If we did, Mr. President, they didn't get to my desk.
Okay, thank you. Planning and building, Ms. Shine.
No report, Mr. President.
Mr. King, anything else to add from your department tonight?
Um, the only thing I want to add, we talked about the leafack, the decorations. We're still doing general maintenance of the parks and the bike paths. Oh, Whitcomb, the Whitcomb Town Homes. So, last week, we had to have another dumpster delivered out there because of the trash and the mattresses and the furniture, so this is still an ongoing problem for us, but we do, you know, Mr. Griffin's kind enough to get us a dumpster out there that we can put everything in, so we're working on that. The paving operation, the paving program, so we finished up concrete work right across the street on 78th Avenue today. They'll be patching the curb in tomorrow, and that's going to, the, the program's going to be suspended for the year. Temperature, tomorrow's our last nice day, it's going to get bitterly cold, and it's not good weather. And it's not good weather for construction, so that's, that'll be the end of it for the year, and we'll pick back up in the spring.
Thank you. Mr. Griffin, anything else to add besides your report that you gave the council?
Nothing to add, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on tonight to general orders, we have second reading ordinance 24-42. It's an ordinance to amend the wage and salary ordinance number 23-26, as amended, establishing the wage and salary rates of the elected officers, the non-elected officers, and the employees of the Town of Maryville, Indiana. Mr. Griffin, these were very, just select few positions, is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. President. This was to clean up some issues we had with regard to titles in our wage and salary ordinance for parks and recreation that did not align with the job description. So because we know we'll be taking up the wage and salary ordinance at some point, our general practice would be to do the entire ordinance over, but given the time, this did get a chance to go back to council affairs. We just dealt with just the park. So what this does is it doesn't create, it takes two of the positions and gets the titles to be aligned with the job description. In one case, you were aware that we were talking about having a scheduling administrator as a part-time position. That position now is created here with the rate of pay. And in the case of park maintenance, as you know, we've had to enlist Mr. King and the noble members of his staff to help with park care. There's a pay differential there. So we used to authorize up to five people. We don't really have, we have difficulty getting five of the people to do maintenance unless it's the summertime. So it's an interim step. This came from personnel and employee policy. We're creating three positions from five, two of which will have the starting pay. They'll be part of the park group and assigned there. They'll do park things, but they could be supervised by, to augment the staff that is doing park workforce from public works. And they'll be paid according to entry level park, public works, or street workers. And then one of the positions will be paid as they would always be paid, and they'll assist the person who's in charge of managing maintenance at the Dean and Barbara White Center. So it's paid for by reducing the authorized positions. This is what we believe is an intermediate step. We want to take another look at it after we get a better handle on the recurrent money we'll get from the food and beverage tax. But we do believe this is necessary in light of getting us aligned with existing job descriptions and to take care of those two positions we talked about in light of trying to get our workers to work with street department to do the maintenance of the parks. We hope that you'll favor it. You have introduced it. It did pass on first reading, and we hope that you'll pass it this evening.
Thank you, sir. And we did do a public hearing on this at the last meeting, is that correct?
We did it, yes. We did introduce it, and it passed in the last meeting.
Very good. What's the pleasure of the council?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Ms. Neal, seconded by Councilor She, for approval of 24-42 on second reading. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing done, Mr. January, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Five in favor.
Five to zero, the motion carries.
I thank the council.
Moving on tonight to resolutions, we have resolution number 24-36. It's a resolution approving an amendment to the existing lease agreement between the Town of Maryville and the Maryville Pop Warner Incorporated. Mr. Griffin?
Mr. President, do we, I beg your pardon, we did take up ordinance 24-43 already because of the public hearing, did we not?
We did, yes, sir.
Thank you, I beg your pardon.
That's not a problem.
You were asking about the lease, Mr. President?
Yes, the resolution 24-36.
There's a 10-year lease that had been negotiated in part to try to support Pop Warner as a not-for-profit that is highly attended by Maryville young people. There is a provision in the lease that requires that annually we get together with them, and we take a look at their books to modify their lease if it's warranted or could be afforded. We played catch-up, it hadn't been done before, so we looked at two years, and they seem to be operating well. Their cash balance doesn't change from year to year very much, so they're kind of coming in close. But after speaking with the president of that group, they consented to a $200 increase for the year. That'll only bring it from $1,000 to $1,200 for the year, $600. It's two installments for both of their seasons. It would be effective in 2025 if it's adopted by the council this evening. And then we expect it to be adopted by the governing board of Pop Warner, but they're sort of waiting for you to take the first step.
And as we talked about in the workshop, Mr. Griffin, this organization really doesn't make a lot of money, right? They're pretty much a break-even operation.
They have to be because their cash balance has not changed all that much from year to year, so they're essentially living within their income.
Thank you, sir. What's the wishes of the council?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Yuzlak, with a second by Ms. Leona, to approve resolution 24-36. Questions or comments? Hearing done, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The motion carries, Mr. Griffin.
I thank the council, I'm sure they will too.
Moving on tonight to resolution 24-37. This is a resolution approving a partial facility use agreement for the Dean and Barbara White Community Center between the Boys and Girls Clubs of Greater Northwest Indiana and the Town of Maryville. Mr. Griffin, would you shed some light on this for us?
Yes, Mr. President. As you know, we had a long conversation with that group. Both our town attorney and their attorney had actually prepared and reviewed this, and then it went to my desk, which sometimes is like going to the Twilight Zone. I beg the council's pardon. So after consulting with the town attorney, he did one more review. I did also have a conversation with the attorney for the Boys and Girls Club, and my concern was I didn't notice them paying their rent. We would like them to do that, but if I were the controller of their organization without an approved agreement, I wouldn't pay it either. So it is a $2,000 a month agreement, and we're asking that you approve it this evening. It'll be forwarded to their board, which we expect them to fully embrace it. And then we'll have a catch-up payment from August forward, and they'll continue to pay until this lease term. This agreement expires, I believe, in May.
Did you say that was $2,000 a month?
I believe, yeah, I hope I did, because that's what I'm reading.
It is.
And how much are they in arrears?
Well, arguably, they're not in arrear at all because there's no agreement that's been approved. But they haven't paid since August. So after talking with the president, once this is approved, we expect them to come across fully. So the issue isn't about whether they're going to pay us. They were doing their due diligence. If I were the controller of that organization, we didn't have an agreement, I might be putting an escrow of the money, but I wouldn't be sending it to us till we had an agreement. It just is a matter of that, it kind of got in the ether, and now we're taking steps to correct that.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
So they definitely will be paying.
Yes.
Once we make the motion, they will be paying, correct?
They're going, yes, it has to go to their board to be approved, which we fully expect them to do, and then they will pay.
Okay, thank you.
Erica, is that, do you concur with, they've paid up through August?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve this resolution 24-36.
Thank you, Mrs. Yuzlak. Is there a second?
A second.
Mrs. Neal, thank you. Any further discussion on the resolution? Hearing done, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? That motion carries.
I thank the council.
We don't have any BZA or large gathering actions tonight.
No, Mr. President.
We have no old business or new business before us. Public comment. Please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record if you'd like to make a public comment.
Brian Musart, 201 E68 Place. Ordinance 24-42. There was no public comment or public hearing last week or the last meeting. As a matter of fact, if you look at the last week's agenda, it says public hearings none. So taxpayers were not allowed to question or comment on that ordinance. I would like that to be corrected.
You said 24 what?
The wage and salary ordinance.
The wage and salary. What happened to the person who managed, who was the person who managed the parks? You referred to a person who managed the parks, there was five people. What happened? What happened to the person?
This is not question and answer, it's public comment.
The public hearing is for questions for taxpayers.
Oh, it's for public comment. Comment? We take in your comment.
My comment is for questions and answers on the ordinance where there was no public hearing. This is the public.
And so you can make a comment, you can make a comment, and then at our next meeting, somebody will have an answer for you, or you can wait till after the meeting is over and ask questions where you'll get, you'll get answers if they have answers to give.
I think our Mr. President will come in on this situation, please.
Well, no, we need to look it up. I did ask if we did a public hearing, and everyone said we did.
Mr. President, we had it introduced. At introduction, there's seldom a hearing, and this was an additional appropriation. It's a wage and salary ordinance. There's no statutory, and our ordinance doesn't provide for any special hearing, but it was publicly addressed. Now, if the minutes say it wasn't introduced for first reading, we'll have to check that because it's here because of the belief it was. That's my recollection.
Thank you.
But it wouldn't have been the last meeting, it would have been the meeting before that.
I just want to make it.
Because it was at council affair.
I just want to make it very clear that the attorney should have an answer right now, yes, we did it or not, because he would have been the one who had published the notice of public hearing, which he does not have. That's, that's my public comment on that.
I beg the council's pardon. This was introduced not at the last meeting, that is to say, the ordinance about which there's a question, but the meeting prior. And then it was referred to council affairs, which dealt with it.
I'm sorry, I think I'm the one who said the last meeting.
Yes.
So it was two meetings ago.
Yes, two meetings ago.
And we'll look that up.
Yes, but legal notice would not have been necessary for an ordinance that's amending the wage and salary ordinance, Mr. President, and our local ordinance doesn't require it either.
Okay, thank you.
So I'd ask for an apology.
You don't get an apology for nothing. You are not an elected official, you shouldn't even be sitting up there. You shouldn't sit off to the side. That's, that's your apology. You can apologize.
Thanks for the derogatory comments. Remember that for next time.
Ryan, please, Ryan. It's been a good meeting, let's not, come on.
Please, just deal with it.
Please ask the non-elected official to not interrupt me. That's.
Please finish up, Ryan.
My first point is, again, publicly requesting a resolution for the fire department to have the property at the corner of 73rd and Madison Street. Having it written down on a piece of paper where everybody has voted and agreed upon it would be the safest way to make that deal concrete and solid like any written contract.
You suggested that before, thank you very much.
In addition, the Maryville agency residents are involved heavily, and we would like to seek more support from the Maryville Town Council. We would like to get more involved. We have dealt with, I personally have been with Mrs. Neal's Special Events Committee until they did not want to have resident volunteers. And some of the things were very successful events with residents. Residents want to get involved, residents want to beautify, residents want to clean up. We need to start supporting the residents who want to make Maryville an awesome place to be. Lastly, we want to make sure that everybody has a safe and happy Thanksgiving.
President Bella, for the record, that is absolutely not true about the events committee. The residents are more than welcome to participate, and that has never, ever been said. What the events committee will not tolerate is confusion within the committee. So if anybody would like to join the events committee, you are more than welcome to join it.
Okay, Brian, there you go.
I was on the committee, and then I was disinvited from the committee. You can.
Then you need to get with me, and you need to ask why. We will not tolerate confusion within our committee.
Guys, we're not going to do this here on the floor, that's not.
Okay, so now I have to ask her why she has disinvited me, but I can be involved.
I rest assured you don't want me to say publicly why. We're not, we're not, we're not, we're not.
Please do it.
Please, let's have a seat, thank you for your comments.
Paula Poyant, 8031 Massachusetts. So last town council meeting, there was a vote in support for Hobart proposal for the convention center. And I was questioning, why didn't Maryville submit a proposal or a bid for the convention center? We're all just talking about getting funds for the town, bringing entertainment to the town. So I emailed Mr. Griffin, and I said, another question I have, what did the Town of Maryville, why did the Town of Maryville Council do not submit a bid for the convention center? And I quote, "As for the decision not to sponsor or submit a proposal for a convention center might be attributable to organizational capacity." I really, I really don't know what informed that choice. Why are you asking? And this is stated. So then I went about and asked the council, said, why didn't we not put a bid for the convention center? And Mr. Bella, thanks for replying back, said, "Maryville's Economic Development Director, Angie Chilcot, did the level of advocacy that could be expected in those circumstances. Also, town manager Michael Griffin had suggested informally that we consider supporting someone else's application in the hopes that we could help shape some of the development that would come from it. We cooperated with the survey and tried promoting those sites in Maryville." So there's some discrepancy here on why it wasn't, why it was, I don't understand. So maybe some clarification.
That wasn't my full response to you, right? That was not my full response.
That was, I have a highlight on the email. "We cooperated with the survey and tried promoting those sites in Maryville. We did not have interested developers and landowners willing to sell for a convention center purpose," was the final. So, I mean, was it, was it organizational capacity? Because he said he didn't know about this on Friday. I emailed on Friday, and you guys replied on Monday with this, saying Mr. Griffin supported this to support another town. Now, are we not putting a convention, or putting a bid into conventions so we could put more warehouses? I mean, I don't, I don't know what's, what's, what's the answer to this. So if we can get some clarification on this, that'd be great. Because this is a huge loss of revenue if we don't.
You would read my response entirely, there's a little more explanation in there. I sent you back a response, it's like two and a half pages.
I know, and some of it, I entered it into AI, and it came out to almost similar responses.
Okay.
So if we were using AI to reply to residents, I don't know, we're using that to make town decisions as well.
Okay.
So.
I'm Norma Hollingsworth Rico from 7908 Wilson Street. And my issue is our street and curbs, which I did speak to Mr. King last week. He said it would be, they redo that section from 78th to 80th is where the real, really bad curbs are. And he said it would be in next year's, before next year's, the end of next year's construction. And I just want to make sure that's done, because one of the neighbors said that he was told that for three years in a row. And it is creating water problems for a lot of the residents. I do have a petition, there's only 10 homes on that street, but I do have a petition signed by nine of those residents, of the 10 residents, if I can submit it to somebody.
Sure, just give it to the chief right there, and we'll, we'll get it to the.
And that's all, I just wanted assurance that it would be handled, as Mr. King said.
Thank you, ma'am.
Name's Javina Lyles, 2626 West 65th Place. My question is, what do we do? I know the animal control thing is kind of not in place, but what do we do? Yesterday, we had a raccoon that I guess had dimpster or something, what is it?
Distemper?
Distemper. And it walked around in the grass, and it walked around in the street. We already don't have streetlights there, so, I mean, street, yeah, streetlights. So when the raccoon just kept walking in circles and circles, we called the police, we tried to call all the numbers, no one ever answered, no one ever got back to us. So. So, by the end of the night, we had to try to take matters into our own hands. But how does that, how do we rectify that if no one answers, or what do we do? I just, that's my question.
I'm just curious, which number did you call?
The non-emergency number.
Because there, so, I'm wondering if you got our number here, and it was after ours?
Because it called, we called, no, it was before, we called, we pressed four, we pressed six, and then we called another number, and I just didn't know what to do because it's so dark over there already. And if kids walk by, and a lot of time, people are jogging and different things, I would hate for somebody to.
Sure. No, kind of, just to touch on what you were talking about with animal control, and that's something that animal control wouldn't have dealt with, with these raccoons, it's that time of year where they get distemper. Usually what we do is if it's in a safe environment, we usually have an officer, if they're free or available, to come and put it down. That's the most humane thing that we can do with these.
I can see that, but it was just like right there, so if you're walking along.
Sure.
You would, you would encounter it, so I just want to, thank you.
Well, I, I got a number for, I can give you a number before you leave for the dispatch center, so next time you have an issue like that, you can contact a dispatch center, because that's where all our calls come through.
Okay.
So, it's a lot easier to get the police there then.
Okay, thank you.
Chief Nussus.
Yes.
In a case like that, if we're not able to get a response, what would the consequences be if the neighbor or resident just shot the animal themselves?
I mean, in one of those situations, as long as it's safely done, and when I say there's nothing surrounding it, there's nowhere that a bullet can ricochet, it would be understandable that that's what has to be done.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And then would somebody, would they be responsible for removing it, or would the animal?
Yes.
Yes, sir. My turn. Yes, sir, please.
Rick LaFever, West 79th Place, out there in the fourth ward. Want to thank the chief and all his team for handling that little situation the other day up there on 7319 Wallace. Surprised that Dollar General didn't put that guy to work, fill it, stocking shelves, but you know, these things happen. And Public Works, Steve, you guys are doing a great job. You know, actually, y'all doing a great job.
Thank you.
It's a hard job to do, to wrangle this group of, into doing something, you're all good too, just saying. Nobody's on the naughty list, although my car says that, so, anyway, y'all doing a great job. Well, we got to go into 2025, yes, includes you too, Joe, I, you know, I know we've had.
I appreciate, I appreciate that. The attorneys.
We've had our words. Uh, but I got to make one, you know, we're going to get a 25% tariff on lumber, whiskey, and tequila. What the heck are we going to do? First of the year, that's what they're saying, so, okay, I'm done, y'all have fun.
We'll look for a little extra something in our stockings, Rick.
You know, it says on the back of the card, Santa says no coal for you.
All right.
And Mr. LaFever.
I can't compete with that. Chris Holce, 800 West 73rd Avenue. Just want to say that little things don't go unnoticed. On the positive side, Steve, I don't know if it's your guys, but I noticed the 73rd and Madison area, it's been cleaned up very nice, it looks great, right across the street from Speedway, that looks really nice. And Ms. Neal, I noticed, I noticed all the Christmas lights. I know Steve's guys put them up on Broadway, those look wonderful. But lastly, I will say, I'm a little disappointed, Boys and Girls Club, after the generous generosity of the town, I don't think there's too much, too much to be current. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. For announcements tonight, we have the town council meeting next December 10th at 6:30, council affairs meeting December 3rd at 4 o'clock, the Dean and Barbara White Community Center Committee meeting will be at December 9th at 5:00, and a tree lighting celebration and contest December 6th at 5:30 at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center.
Mr. President.
Mr. January.
Yeah, I would also just like to publicly acknowledge the Maryville Changing Agency. A lot of the things that you all have just recently done in terms of helping neighbors that have needs and helping beautify the community, I believe it's contagious, continue doing it, and Maryville will continue to shine.
And I'm glad you're doing it in decency and in order.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving. You're adjourned.
We need to adjourn.
Don't move.